Good evening and welcome, everybody. Thanks for taking the time out of your night to join us for our public hearing this evening. This is a public hearing for an Eagle application received from Michigan Gas Utilities for a project in Calhoun County for approximately seven miles of gas main replacement. My name is Ryan Blazek. I'm with Eagles Environmental Support Division. I'm just going to be helping to moderate the public hearing tonight. But before we move too far forward, just have a couple of things to go through. First off, this is what our agenda looks like. Going through just a brief introduction right now. A big thing to keep in mind is that there's kind of two parts to the hearing tonight. We're going to start off with an informational session where the applicant has an opportunity to present information on the proposed project. We'll follow that up with a question and answer session, and that should go no later than around 6:30. If we run out of questions or it ends a little earlier than that, we'll move right on to the next part, which is the actual hearing portion where everyone will have an opportunity to make a statement on the record for this application and project. And they'll also cover who to contact with some further questions if you have them. Right, in case you haven't joined us for one of our hearings before, a couple of things to keep in mind. All lines are going to be muted during the hearing period unless you have a question. And we'll wait and have that question and answer session. I'll explain how to do that at that time. And then also, when you're making your statement, you will be able to have your line unmuted. You can submit any questions, though, using the Q and A box in the Zoom toolbar. We'll answer those during that Q and A period. And then also, we're recording this hearing, so this will be posted on our YouTube channel in a couple of days, so you can re-watch it if you so choose. All right, at this time, I'd like to invite our Eagle staff with Water Resources Division on the line to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Michelle DeLong. I'm out of the Kalamazoo District Office. I'm the environmental quality analyst that's handling this application, and I'll be the hearings officer tonight.
And I'm Derek Haraldson, the district supervisor for the Kalamazoo District Office on the water resources side. Kalamazoo District Office, we cover basically the eight counties in the southwest corner of the lower peninsula. So, welcome to everybody.
All right, thank you, Michelle and Derek. All right, so at this time, we're going to go right into the informational session that I talked about. So we're going to unmute Tyler, Jamie, and Rob. And then what we'll have the three of you do is you'll be able to talk and provide your presentation. I have your slides, so please just let me know when to change to the next slide. Please keep the presentation around 10, 15 minutes, so we have some time for Q and A. And that's about all I have. Are you there?
Good afternoon. This is Tyler Miller. Can you hear me?
Okay, yep, we can hear you. Right, are you there, James?
Jamie Newthals, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Thank you.
All right, great, thank you.
And then Rob.
And Rob Rose here. Thank you.
Perfect. All right, thank you, gentlemen. You can kick it off when you're ready.
All right, go ahead to the first slide here. Okay, good evening, everybody. My name is Tyler Miller, engineer and project manager for Michigan Gas. This is a project overview of the Marshall Coldwater Pipeline Replacement. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned before, Jamie Newthals with Michigan Gas, he's our environmental manager. And Rob Rose, he works for emergent and is our environmental consultant. Next slide. Project scope. The scope of the project is to replace the existing tenant transmission line with a 12-inch distribution line over 20 miles. Construction of the project is to be completed in three years with Phase One kicking off this year, which is 6.2 miles. Phase Two next year, which will be 6.3 miles. And Phase Three in 2026, which will be seven and a half miles. The project is also increasing the size of the pipeline from 10-inch to 12-inch to accommodate future growth of the surrounding area. Phase One will replace, the new pipeline will be replaced within the existing pipeline corridor. All land rights for Phase One have been acquired either by obtaining easements or by utilizing MGU's existing easements. Next slide. Project need and justification for the proposed pipeline replacement. Michigan Gas Utilities is committed to providing safe, reliable, and affordable natural gas to its customers. With that in mind, it is prudent to start replacing some of our older natural gas infrastructure, such as the Marshall Coldwater Pipeline, which was installed in 1952. The existing Marshall Coldwater Pipeline is not capable of internal inspection, thereby impeding the company's ability to comply without expensive maintenance and possibly ineffective monitoring with applicable safety standards contained in the current 25th edition of Michigan Gas Safety Standards as adopted by the Michigan Public Service Commission and the Code of Federal Regulations, Part 182. Next slide. So the next couple of slides here are going to be overview maps of each phase. Phase One, as I mentioned before, will follow the existing pipeline route running parallel with the existing line, no more than 20 to 30 feet away from it. Phases Two and Three, for the majority of the routes, will follow the existing line again in parallel within 20 to 30 feet. There are a few minor adjustments we have made or route deviations to minimize impacts on the environment and to support our future maintenance activities. If you've looked at the filing, you'll notice that there's a three-quarter mile gap somewhere in the middle of the proposed route. That three-quarter mile section was replaced in 2020 as a part of MGU's replacement planning projects and therefore not included in this pipeline replacement project. Next slide. So this is Phase One's overview map. Phase One starts at Division Drive, at MGU's Division Drive Gate Station in Marshall, Michigan, runs 6.2 miles to the south, around Lion Lake and under Marshall Country Club, and then ends on the north side of Quality Camping, just north of Tecantia, Michigan. Next slide. Phase Two begins at the south side of Quali Camping and runs 6.3 miles to the south, just south of Tecantia, ending at an MGU-owned regulator station on Hadlock Road. And then, next slide. And then lastly, Phase Three begins at that regulator station at Hadlock Road and runs 7.5 miles to the south, ending in Coldwater, Michigan, just north of another MGU-owned regulating station. Next slide. And I will hand it off to Jamie to cover this last section.
Sure. Thanks, Tyler. As previously mentioned, my name is Jamie Newthals. I am the environmental manager for Michigan Gas Utilities and serve as such on the Marshall Coldwater Project. Besides the Eagle individual permits, which are part 301 and 303, which we are having a meeting concerning today, MGU also did receive approval from the Michigan Public Service Commission through the Act Nine process. We do, and that's for all three phases. The Phase One, we did receive Calhoun County Soil Erosion Centip Control Permits and also drain crossing and easement approvals along with an Eagle NPDS notice of coverage. Other approvals and coordination did include working with Eagle and the Michigan Natural Features Inventory information along with the Fish and Wildlife Service to ensure protection of endangered species and wildlife. And then finally, we did obtain information from Michigan and State Historical Preservation Office and did work with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources to ensure this phase of the project did not result in any cultural resource impacts. And I believe that's the last of our slides.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks for providing that information and attending tonight. We're going to go ahead and go in with the question and answer session at this time. So if I could have the Eagle staff on the line turn your cameras on. And then we also have our representatives from Michigan Gas Utilities who are on the phone or on the line as well. If there are questions, you can ask a question by submitting your question using the Q and A box at the bottom of your screen. So you see that Q and A box. Type your question in, send it to us, or you can click the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. Click that, raise your hand. We'll call on you using the last four digits of your number. Or I'm sorry, we'll call on you using your last name. For the people on the phone, we'll call on you using the last four digits of your number if you select pound two. So if you're on the phone, you can ask a question too, just like pound two. And then that'll raise your hand in Zoom, and we'll call on you using your phone number. A couple of the quick things, just want to let you know, if you want to make a statement tonight, hold on to that. That's going to be in the hearing part, which is next after this. So this portion of tonight is specifically to ask questions. You won't have an opportunity to do that later. So if you have any questions related to the application or Eagle procedures or the process, feel free to ask those right now. All right, I have a hand raised. All right, Scott Katz, we're going to unmute you. And then you can unmute yourself using the microphone icon at the bottom of your screen. And then you'll be able to ask your question. It looks like you're on, are you there, Scott?
I'm here.
Okay, awesome. Feel free to ask your question.
Okay, thanks. First, I want to say thanks for everybody coming out and doing this public hearing. I think it's important to do this, and I've learned a lot just in the five-minute presentation that the engineers gave. I do have some questions, some educational questions. This is a 20-mile segment. How long is the entire pipeline and where does it start and where does it end?
All right, thanks for that question, Scott. Anybody, any of our representatives from?
Yeah, so this is Tyler Miller again from Michigan Gas. The 20-mile replacement is the entire replacement for this transmission line. So we have many laterals that come off of that line that are part of a larger distribution network system, but this is the main pipeline from Marshall to Coldwater.
All right. I'm here. Okay, some other questions I had on the pipeline. Is the existing pipeline going to be abandoned in place or is that going to be pulled up?
The existing pipeline will be utilized in a different capacity at a lower pressure and smaller segments. And then for the portions that will no longer be used, it will be abandoned in place. It will not be pulled out of the ground.
Okay. Some other questions I had on the pipeline. The sewer and water lines in our area are on or closer to US 27. So they're between US 27 and the pipeline easement. In the future, when water and sewer wants to come west and cross that easement, cross that pipeline, how is that going to happen? Is it going to be bored underneath it? How does that process work?
It can be accomplished in a couple of different ways. One, yes, it can be directionally bored underneath of that line, or it can be open cut across that line. We don't have exclusive easement rights, so they are free to cross the pipeline.
Okay. Another question I had about the pipeline is, how does it know if there's a break in dropping pressure to shut itself off? What are the safety features that the pipeline has?
The pipeline's monitored at several locations along the route at our gate stations, monitored 24/7 by gas control. So to detect, you know, pressure increases, abnormalities, flow increases, such like that.
Okay, so am I thinking correctly that this gas that's flowing this pipeline is the same gas, natural gas? I'd use my furnace and my stove. Is this, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so if the.
I'm going to let you keep asking questions, Scott, but if anybody else has a question, please type it in or raise your hand, and we'll move on. But until then, Scott, you can keep asking questions.
I just had one other question about the gas, and that is, is this treated with that additive that you could smell it if there's a leak?
Yes, we inject mercat then into the gas stream, which gives it the smell in the event that there's a leak.
Okay, well, thank you. I think you've answered my questions. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your question, Scott, and Tyler for answering. Are there any others? Let's see here. All right, I have one that was typed in. Is the trenching equipment decontaminated for every landowner's property? This is a concern of ours to keep invasive species from spreading.
And so I can answer that a little bit. That is one of the specifications that we include in our permits. That requires a hot pressure wash for equipment and that roads that are used for access. But I don't know if anyone from MGU wants to speak further to that.
Michelle, this is Jamie calling. I would, you know, just lead to the fact that it's not necessarily that we would do the contamination or, you know, the, between each property. That's not necessarily an our end, a determining factor. But as you mentioned, we're aware that they'll have, will have conditions within our permit for, you know, controlling the spread of invasive species. And I think it's a pretty large list of items that we take into consideration. And although that might not be specific to properties and more based on, you know, when we're moving in and out of a section or new equipment bringing in, there are certainly measures put in place to avoid the spread of invasive species.
All right, thanks for that question. Thanks for the answer, Michelle and Jamie. Are there any other questions either typed in or if you want to ask it verbally? Again, raise your hand if you're on your computer tonight or if you're on your phone. Select pound two on your, or hit pound two on your receiver, and that will raise your hand and we'll call on you using your phone number, last four digits of your phone number, and we'll allow you to speak and ask your question. If there aren't any further questions, then what we'll do is we'll move right into the next part of the tonight. And so that part will be to, other ways you can make a comment on this application and we'll allow people to make comments tonight as well, anybody who would like to make one once we get to that part. We'll also provide Michelle's info in case there are additional questions. And I'm still not seeing any other questions or raised hands, so we're going to go ahead and move on to the next part of the evening. Yeah, and thank you, Jamie, Tyler, and Rob for being part of the question and answer session tonight. And Michelle and Derek, of course. All right, as I mentioned, we'll talk about the other ways to submit an official comment. If you have a comment, you can submit it through our My Enviro application through submission number HPWYEVX57FZ0. And you'll see the link in front of you. That's also going to be put in the chat. But you can also submit your comments by mail to Eagle Water Resources Division at the Kalamazoo District Office, and that address is 7953 Adobe Road, A-D-O-B-E Road. And that's in Kalamazoo, Michigan, 49009. That public comment period will be open for 10 days, which will be April 20, 2024. So that's how long you'll have to make an additional comment. And I should also mention, a little later on tonight, I'll be showing the screen again in case you missed something. Of course, or in case you want to make additional comments after tonight. All right, we're going to move into the hearing part, so Michelle, I'd like to invite you to read the opening statement tonight.
All right, so this part will be largely narrative portion that I'll be reading. So bear with me. It's a bit dry, and there may be some overlap with what you've already heard. But this will be the initial opening portion of the hearing, and then afterward, you'll be able to make your comments. So just starting off, thanks again, everyone, for joining us. My name's Michelle DeLong. I'm the district representative in the Water Resource Division of the Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy. I'll be serving as the hearing officer for the hearing on Eagle submission number HPWYEVX57FZ0. Notice for the hearing was published in the Marshall Advisor Chronicle, the March 30th edition, as well as the online Eagle calendar. With me tonight is Derek Haraldson, who's a district supervisor for Eagle Resources Division, the Kalamazoo District Office. So I'll begin with some background information about why we're here tonight, and then I'm going to describe the purpose of the hearing and how your comments will be used. Following that, I'll outline the procedures under which we'll take your comments and then describe what will happen after tonight's hearing. And then it'll be your time to provide comments. Once that is complete, I'll read the closing statement for the hearing. So just to give you some background information, the Water Resource Division is responsible for administering several programs that help protect in the lakes and streams, wetlands, floodplains, sand dunes, and the Great Lakes. These programs regulate activities like dredging or filling in lake stream or wetland, constructing a dam, constructing a marina, placing shore protection, or constructing permanent docks and building in a designated critical sand dune area, wetland, or floodplain. The law governing those responsibilities is the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act, 1994 PA 451 as amended, or we will just refer to it as Act 451. So we're here tonight because we have an application from James Newthals representing Michigan Gas Utilities, who has proposed to remove wetland vegetation, excavate and place fill within wetland and cross below wetland and streams using directional boring to facilitate replacement of approximately seven miles of existing 10-inch gas main with new 12-inch gas main. Wetland impacts are proposed to be mitigated via the purchase of forested wetland bank credits. And I will, I'm just going to read directly from the public notice to give you the additional details. To facilitate replacement of approximately seven miles of existing 10-inch gas main with 12-inch gas main, the applicant proposes to remove vegetation, excavate and place fill within wetland, and cross below wetland and streams using directional boring. Approximately 0.69 acre of temporary wetland impact is proposed for the placement of construction matting within wetland to allow vehicular access to certain work areas. Open cut trenching is proposed with an approximately 546 linear feet of wetland with trench crossing excavations measuring approximately four feet wide and six feet deep. Directional boring gas main installation is proposed below the Brace Lake Drain or Talbot Creek and the Ottawa Drain for approximately 20 linear feet and 40 linear feet respectively, and below 1,166 linear feet of well. One temporary clear span bridge measuring approximately 60 feet in length is also proposed to cross the Ottawa Drain for temporary construction access. Approximately 0.29 acre of forested wetland and 0.06 acre of scrub shrub wetland is proposed to be converted to emergent wetland as a result of tree clearing activities for permanent pipeline maintenance and temporary construction access along the route. And once again, wetland mitigation is proposed off-site. So just to describe the purpose for the hearing tonight, for a permit to be granted, Eagle must find that the proposed activities described in the public notice meet certain criteria set by Part 301 in the Lakes and Streams and Part 303 Wetlands Protection of Act 451. Generally, we must consider the effect of the proposed project on regulated resources. When reviewing an application for permit under the provisions of Part 301, Eagle must consider the following as required by Section 30106 of Part 301. The department shall issue a permit if it finds that the structure or project will not adversely affect the public trust or riparian rights, and the department shall not grant a permit if the proposed project or structure will unlawfully impair or destroy any of the waters or other natural resources of the state. Likewise, when reviewing an application for permit under the provisions of Part 303, Eagle must consider the following as required by Section 30311 of Part 303. And this is the wetlands protection part. A permit for an activity listed in Section 30304 shall not be approved unless the department determines that the issuance of a permit is in the public interest, that the permit is necessary to realize the benefits derived from the activity and that the activity is otherwise lawful. Number two, a permit shall not be issued unless it's shown that an unacceptable disruption will not result to the aquatic resources. And number three, a permit shall not be issued unless the applicant has demonstrated that either the proposed activity is primarily dependent upon being located in wetland or a feasible and prudent alternative does not exist. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the Michigan Gas Utilities Project an opportunity to provide information for Eagle to consider before a decision is made on the application. Please recognize that Eagle can only consider information if it relates to the previously mentioned criteria in Act 451. Some of you might simply want to express your support or your opposition to the project, and we'll be happy to make note of your position, but please understand that Eagle is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether there is widespread support or opposition to the project. So the hearing is being recorded. As we mentioned, and your comments will be part of the information Eagle will consider in making its decision to issue or deny a permit on the proposed project. The public comment period for this public hearing is open for 10 days from the date of the hearing, so that ends on April 20 of 2024. Additional information and comments submitted in writing during the 10-day public comment period will also be considered in Eagle's decision. Following the close of the public comment period, Eagle will make a decision to either issue a permit for the project as proposed or with modifications, or send a letter of denial. You may find out what the decision is by checking the Eagle My Enviro portal website and searching for the application number. Again, that's HPWYEVX57FZ0. Finally, to make sure the hearing is conducted in a fair manner, we'll follow these steps for taking comments. First, we'll begin by calling on anyone who's indicated with their hearing registration that they'd like to speak. And if you didn't indicate when registering that you wanted to speak, but still have a comment to provide, please just raise your hand in the Zoom toolbar. And then we'll call on all those that raise their hand to make a comment if they haven't already been called upon. And as a reminder, if you're calling in by phone, the directions of the moderator on how to raise your hand mentioned earlier, just follow those. You may also submit written comments to Eagle via the My Enviro portal, email, or US mail. When your name's called, your microphone will be unmuted. As you begin your comments, please state your name and any group or association you might represent. Each person will be given five minutes to make their comments. And we'll indicate to you when you have a minute left. Please begin wrapping up your comments and end within the allotted time. If need be, we'll indicate when your time has ended. And of course, I ask that we all be courteous and respectful to one another. Please recognize that Eagle staff are here to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your comments on the project and to listen to those comments. So thank you for your attention to that very lengthy narrative. And we will now begin calling the names of all the people that have indicated they'd like to make a statement.
All right, thank you, Michelle, for reading that. As Michelle mentioned, I've got one name on my list of people who indicated they want to make a statement. A couple of other things to keep in mind, as Michelle mentioned, you all have five minutes. After we call on that person, anyone with a raised hand, who wants to raise their hand, can do so and make a comment. When, you should see a timer show up on your screen if you're not calling in with a five-minute countdown. And then once you get to one minute, you'll hear this noise, which basically indicates you have one minute left. It's going to be one comment per person. If there's someone else on the line who'd like to make a comment, please let me know when you're making your comment, before you make your comment, just so that I know to keep you on the line here for a minute. So with that, we're going to go ahead and get started. So with that, we're going to go ahead and get started. First person, Scott Katz. So Scott, we're going to unmute you, and then you'll be able to unmute yourself. And then you can start when you're ready.
Your mic up. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, my comment related to the notification process. And when I received the notification, it said that there were plans attached and there were not. So the notifications went out without the attached plans. It did have a website and an address that one could look at. But that website that was given in that notification does not take you to the permit. It just takes you to the general Eagle webpage. And then from there, you need to try to find the permit. And then once you find the permit, there's really not a good way to go through the attachments. There's 140-plus attachments to this. It would be very helpful if there was an index. So I thought that the notification process was not very user-friendly, and I would suggest that in the future, some changes be made.
Yeah, thanks for your comments Scott and that feedback. It's appreciated. All right. Is there anybody else who would like to make a comment tonight? If so, you can raise your hand using the Zoom toolbar with the raise hand icon. Or if you're on the phone, select pound two, and that will raise your hand in Zoom. And then we will call on you using the last four digits of your phone number. And I should also mention, if I will show that screen again in case we don't have any other comments tonight, that screen for other ways to make a comment. And then I'll also be providing Michelle's contact information so that if you have additional questions or information on the website or information or questions related to this application, you can contact Michelle. So is there anybody else who would like to make a comment who's on the line? All right, going once, going twice. And like I said, if I don't have any raised hands, we will move on. Right. Well, thank you, everybody, and thanks for that comment. And Michelle, I'd like to invite you to read the closing statement for us tonight.
All right, well, thanks for your comment. And for the folks that showed up to listen in, we appreciate your interest in the project and that you took the time to be here. Those are really useful comments. And as indicated at the beginning of the hearing, you can submit additional written comments until April 20th of 2024. Following the close of the public comment period, we'll consider all comments received and make a decision on the proposed project. Just to remind those who may still want to submit a written comment, comments can be submitted via the My Enviro portal, email or US mail. The hearing is now closed. Thanks, everyone, again.
Yeah, thank you, Michelle. Yeah, I've got that screen up that has the other ways to make a comment that Michelle was mentioning. And again, submission HPWYVX57FZ0. In case there is anyone on the phone, I'm also going to read off the address. Eagle Water Resources Division, Kalamazoo District Office, 7953 Adobe Road, Kalamazoo, Michigan. And the comment period will be up until April 20th, like Michelle had mentioned. All right, and then as I mentioned before, you can contact Michelle. Here's your contact information on your screen if you have additional questions. And Michelle can be reached at 269-491-9403 or at delongm1@michigan.gov, D E L O N G M 1 at M I C H I D A N dot gov. All right, and that about wraps us up. But do you have any closing comments for us tonight, Derek?
Oh yeah, just appreciate everybody who's here, taking some time out of their evening to participate, learn about the project, share some comments, and we very much appreciate it. Again, I know everybody's busy, so thank you. Thank you for everybody that took the time to join us, and hopefully it was informational.
Yeah, thanks Derek and Michelle and all the attendees tonight. The last thing I'll have before we leave is just a reminder that this was recorded. It'll be on our YouTube channel in a couple of days, and so you'll be able to find it there. So thanks a lot, and I hope you all have a great rest of your evening.
Thanks.